I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission meeting, October 26, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. First item, we do have a quorum. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the September 28, 2021 regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mayor Cole.
Second.
Second by Mr. Holliday. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. First item, site plan Deli Taco, new building of 5,587 square feet on 0.879 acres requested by HFR. Property located at 5022 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 15, parcel 17.04, C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by NFA Investments, Inc. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is the site plan request for approval for 5022 Murfreesboro Road, which is also known as the Del Taco, or excuse me, Deli Taco, not Del Taco, the chain. This is not part of a chain. You see the image there on the screen shows the current location of the abandoned gas station. Here's a closer look there at the corner of Murfreesboro Road and Waldron. So you can see a lot of concrete left from the former gas station. And the building is still there, and they have plans to demolish that building as part of the site plan. So the zoning is C2, which does allow this use. By the way, in addition to convenient sales, they're planning on having a gas station here as well, so there will be fuel pumps and a fuel canopy. This photo shows what it looks like currently there, some concrete barriers, and then Walgreens is in the distance on the other corner at Waldron and Murfreesboro. Slightly different angle there. Again, shows the building that'll be torn down and lots of remaining concrete. And then this is the site plan that was submitted, and they've really had all their technical comments done now for over a month, except for one small section of sidewalk in the rear. So they resubmitted plans, and they're showing that sidewalk. And there were no technical comments at the last meeting. There's just a closer view of the site plan. So the fuel canopy is here, and then the building is pushed to the back with parking on both sides a bit. And then, of course, the architectural elevations have not changed any over the course of the past two months. And there's not any technical items, so that completes the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from her staff or for the developer?
Chairman, I appreciate the group working with the planning commission and getting all the items addressed, and with that, I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted by Alderman Coats. Do we have a second?
Our second.
Second by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item, site plan Loving Kindness Childcare, existing building of 2,203 square feet requested by Art Arctuity. Proposed located, property located at 5428 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 18B, Group E, parcel 2.01, C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Michael Witz and Atolls. Mr. Logan.
This project has been withdrawn. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Onto item number three. Site plan Lot 8 Lanham Park, building addition of 2,575 square feet on 0.96 acres requested by Huddleston Steel. Property located at 111 Jordan Drive, tax map 15N, Group A, parcel 5, C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by B&amp;B Properties Smyrna LLC. Mr. Logan.
The consultant has also, their engineer has also withdrawn this project. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Onto item number four. Site plan Advanced Care Medical, new building of 3,550 square feet on 1.1 acres requested by SSO, Inc. Property located at 5181 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 15, parcel 2.02, C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Sally Wallace Investments LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a request for site plan approval at 5181 Murfreesboro Road. So you can see on the overhead image here, this large shopping center is Planet Fitness, and the proposed site sits in front of Planet Fitness, and also just two doors down from the current stormwater and planning building. A little bit closer view, shows a vacant lot. So there's nothing on it today. It's fairly flat. It is C2 zoning. You can see here the rectangular area zooming in. Zooming in, there it is again. So it has C3 all around it, which is this white hatched area. But it is C2 Highway Service. Here's some photos. You can see Planet Fitness in the distance. Just a fairly flat lot. Does have a restaurant on one side, and then the shopping center behind it, and a gas station on the other side. And this is the site plan that's been submitted and was here at the workshop a couple weeks ago. And I understand from that workshop that the only comment was the landscape plan. So they have submitted the landscape plan, and it's in your packets. This building is not too large. It's 3,550 square feet. And you see the parking there is on the southeast side of the building, and then the ingress egress has been changed over the course of time. They were directly connected to Murfreesboro Road, and now they're going the opposite direction toward the rear of the lot. So these are the elevations that have been submitted, and they are unchanged from the last month. So they show brick and stone, as well as a small amount of composite material. So this building is basically just a rectangular building. There is a brick parapet that I know we've talked about before. And this is a landscape plan that was submitted, and then a closer view of it. And there were no other technical reviews from the workshop two weeks ago, so that completes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Chairman, again, once again, appreciate the group working with the planning commission and getting all the items addressed, and with that, I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
Motion to approve is submitted, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. We're going to roll call vote on these next few items.
Aye.
Mr. Holliday?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Motion passes. Onto our next item. Site plan Ked Plasma, new building of 11,000 square feet on approximately 1.3 acres requested by Brett Peters and Associates, Inc. Property located at 5176 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 15M, Group B, parcel 9.02, C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by Pappy Van Winkle LLC. Mr. Logan.
And this is a site plan for 5176 Murfreesboro Road, and it's just a short distance from the last item on the agenda. It's on the opposite side of Murfreesboro Road, so the south side or southwest side of Murfreesboro Road. And this is beside the former Rite Aid. You see the Rite Aid building to the right in this photo. It's still there today. Nothing's happened to that building so far. You can see the zoning map. All of this area is C2, and you can see it there. It's also allows the use that's proposed for this site. And there's some photos of the site that's Rite Aid in the distance.
Bless you, sir.
And then another photo, also very flat lot. So that's Rite Aid. You can see some of Pool &amp; Spa Depot property would be to the right in this photo. See a little bit better there. So moving on to the plan, this plan has not changed drastically in about a month. They did move the entrance, as you remember. Did change the building a little bit so that the front is actually facing Murfreesboro Road instead of the Rite Aid. So instead of facing to the southeast, it's now facing Murfreesboro Road. And closer look there, you can see in the rear, there's parking in the front and the rear, and then there's the dumpster enclosure also shown in the back. And this building is proposed to be about 11,000 square feet. And the elevations submitted show all sides of the building. And there's the east and the north. And here's the close-up of the remaining west and south elevations. The south there at the bottom is the rear of the building. And I believe there were also not, not any comments, technical comments, they just had not stamped plans last month, so they had to come back this month. So that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Any questions or comments on this item?
My comment is, is we still haven't, they still haven't revised the ADA parking in front of the entrances ways. You know, that's my issue I do have with it, is that, for whatever reason, apparently it's the layout of the property, but having the ADA parking spaces not adjacent to the entrances does concern me.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Holliday. All in favor say aye. Roll call, Mr. Coats?
No.
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 Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to vote no, so this motion does not pass. We will entertain another motion.
Make a motion.
It's a matter of discussion. You know, the ADA parking is required to be on-site, but its proximity to the door is really a personal preference. I don't see that, I'm not aware of a code requirement or anything of that nature that it be, you know, close to the door. It just has to be available. And I think the applicant explained that the lay of the topography and getting the ramps, you know, adjacent to that ADA parking was their explanation for why the parking was in the location that it was. We're trained as planning commissioners to have some kind of specific reason most likely and most safely related to our code, you know, for our actions. And I just wonder, I wonder if it's, I wonder if we're making the right decision. I certainly have expressed that in my vote, but having heard the vote go in the direction that it went, I'll share that comment in support of the vote that I made.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
Yeah, I want to just comment, if I could. I mean, obviously, looking at the first one, that we're seeing the interior layout of this building. It's on sheet option dash two, and it appeared that the parking is directly opposite the restrooms and the QA office. So the applicant had indicated there was some logistical issue for that, so I'm just interested to know what that is. I mean, is the applicant here? Want to step up and have a discussion?
If you'd be so kind, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Scott Stow, 1128 Main Street, Cincinnati, Ohio 45202. So on the engineering of this site, to achieve stormwater drainage, the building was set at its current elevation by the engineer. And if you were to shift the ADA or handicap accessible parking spaces over to in front of the door, the ramp that would have to be built to accommodate the ADA parking would mean that when you walk out of the door, you have, it's not the same level. So based on the engineering of, as I mentioned, getting the stormwater out to the current sewer system, it wouldn't allow for the ADA parking spaces to be directly in front of the front entrance. I hope that answers your question.
And with that, you were further questioned in our work session as to, well, why can't you relocate the front door to be in front of the ADA parking where the site allows it to be, where it would be on the same grade? And I believe your explanation there, I'll let you give that explanation.
Sure. Based on having to move the front entrance from what would be the southeast side of the building to facing Murfreesboro Road, it wouldn't allow for the entrances and the flow. These buildings are highly regulated by the federal Food and Drug Administration, the FDA. So there are certain requirements based on how they regulate the industry, and it wouldn't allow for the floor plan and the donor flow to, you know, move the, I mean, that's basically where the entrance had to be, based on modifying the existing floor plan.
So your original plan was to have the entrance facing what we would refer to as the Rite Aid building?
Correct.
And you accommodated the planning commission by relocating that to face it toward Murfreesboro Road, so that we had a building that had an entrance that faced Murfreesboro Road. But you were unable to make both things happen, move the entrance to yet a third location, as well as, you know, accommodate requests from the planning commission of ADA parking proximity to the front door. You've helped in some ways by the planning commission's request, but just can't meet every single requirement, and yet you're fully in compliance with codes and regulations. Am I correct?
That's correct, sir.
Any further questions or discussion?
Just, so on the exit, it looks like if you're coming into the facility, you got a one entrance in on the west side of the building, and then you got an exit on the east side of the building. Is that correct?
I don't have the floor plan in front of me, but that sounds correct. There's a specific donor exit.
Sure. So there's one exit to turn right and the two to turn in. And by looking at the plan here, it looks like that you're crossing over, although the existing driveway is there, you're crossing off your property onto the neighbor's property to get out onto Murfreesboro Road. Is that correct?
That's a shared access easement between the Rite Aid property and mine that was recorded before we purchased the property. But I believe, yes, the exit would be the southeast curb cut onto Murfreesboro Road.
Any further, Mr. Coats?
That's it. That's all, so, yes.
Thank you.
Quick question on the ramp. You said that it wouldn't be even. Can you go into that a little bit more? If the parking was moved down there, you mentioned it couldn't be because the ramp right by the entrance wouldn't be even. Can you explain that for me?
Yeah. Based on the slope of the ramp and the engineering of the elevation of the building, if you were to ramp it up that way, the ramp would be, there would be a change of elevation from when you walk out the door, so that, I mean, physically, you'd almost have to go up because the ramp had to reach a certain level as you walk up to the door. So it really has to do with the elevations and the positive drainage going towards both the underground detention and the detention pond. And, you know, it was an engineering, you know, it was a tricky engineering, to engineer this site. You know, being perfectly flat is not always a good thing when it comes to engineering these sites, especially for drainage. So we worked with it as best we could, and based on code requirements, they're still in the front of the building within a very short distance to the front entrance.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments?
What type of clientele ADA are using your facility? Is it a large number like Kroger has going into their facility? Or is it minimum traffic that you have of people of ADA compliance that are coming into your facility for whatever services that you're providing?
I would not say it's a high level of traffic. Donors are screened and do get physicals, just like most of us do on an annual basis. And typically, you know, I can't say all the time, but typically, it's not a high traffic load using the ADA accessible parking spaces.
No other comments?
Thanks.
The only thing I really have to say is I have to tend to agree with the handicap entrances being near the front door, because when they're not, they generally tend to be used by someone other than what they're necessary for. So I can respect Mr. Coats's request on that. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I want one other comment.
Please, sir.
You referred to the elevations, and look, the elevations on the side away from, the opposite side of the old building on your entrance, you're shown 557.4, and on your end of your property, you're at 556. So it's 12 inches difference. You say great difference in elevation, but it's 12 inches.
I'm sorry, can you ask?
Your elevation on your entranceway off Murfreesboro Road lists on your drawing at 557.4 on the one corner. On the opposite corner on your exit to go out, you're at 556.4 or 7. So, you know, when you say there's a great difference in the drop, there isn't. For me, it's 12 inches.
So that's from curb cut to curb cut. But for drainage, you have to take into effect the, take into account, I apologize, the elevation from the rear of the property to the front, and making sure the positive drainage is happening.
Okay, so I can see at the back of the property, I'm picking one out here, 554.2 is what it shows. 557, I mean, that's going to be three inches difference. So I'm not seeing a great elevation change. I mean, I see it as almost a flat piece of land, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, so this ramp has to go up, you have to have a certain amount of width to get this ramp up to the front entrance. And that's why I mentioned that sometimes flat sites are, can be tricky in this regard. So you have to have enough room for the ramp to go up, enough run, because the slope can't be too much, to get up to the front entrance sidewalk, is the gist of the issue. And based on the current drainage and the site plan modeling that goes on that engineers work through, this is the, this is the only way that the ADA accessible spaces can be that close to the entrance without having some other serious engineering difficulties for the site with regard to stormwater and stormwater detention.
I would like to ask if our city engineer has anything to weigh in on that?
Please, Mr. Rutledge. Thank you. Please, Mr. Leach.
Typically, I try not to re-engineer things as they sit up here. Typically, the problem you have with any type of ADA ramps is you're only allowed about 8% grade on them. So just for instance, if there's a foot of elevation change, you need an eight-foot-long ramp to overcome that. So when you start talking about eight-foot-long ramps, the ramps also have to be ADA compliant. They tend to be, the bare minimum's four feet, but most people tend to go five. If there's a foot elevation difference, you also end up with some guard rail, or excuse me, handrail-type things on them. So when you get into that, you start basically losing parking spaces. You're going to have drainage problems around a ramp of that size, because you know, an eight-foot-long, five-foot-wide ramp is a fairly significant mass of concrete out in the middle of your parking lot. Those are typically the challenges we have, especially when you start talking about sidewalks and anything else. So, you know, if you look at the codes requirement, codes requirement says, you know, for ever 25, or excuse me, subdivision ordinance says you have to have one handicap parking space per 25, which is basically just a reflection of ADA. They have that. It doesn't say where they're supposed to be. Basically, best practice according to ADA 2010 says you put them at the closest place where they can reliably make a easy entry. So the flattest place possible is where you try to put them in architecture and engineering. That's usually just the way it's done. So I can't, you know, like I said, I won't re-engineer anybody else's work, but the reasoning is, it's just really hard to make ramps work in general.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leach. With that, any other questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, just one other comment, please, before we go to a motion. On your sheet, you've got 10 in orange. Do you know what that's referring to? And I understand that the purple is referring to the access easements, but you've got 10 written on it. Do you know what that's about?
I'm sorry, I'd have to see. Does it run to east or west?
Well, it's just, it's 10 with circles on. I mean, you've got the green gives a definition, and the purple gives a definition. The orange doesn't give me a definition. So here, you've got a definition of your purple 14, a definition of 11. I'm not sure what 10 is. Do you know what that's, I mean, it just, there's no definition or no explanation.
I believe that refers to the right-in, right-out island in the middle of the two, of the entrance and then the exit to the right.
Well, that's one response, but the number 10 is also at the back of the property and the side of the property, and on each side, so that they're all over the place. So I understand that's here, but, you know, I'm just trying to understand what this means. Look at sheet two, two is what I'm referring to, Chairman.
Yeah, I believe that just calls out the, where the easements are, because they are illuminated on each one of the easements. There's a large easement that runs east and west behind the building. That's for utilities, city utilities. That's one of the reasons we had to turn the building so that it wasn't originally facing Murfreesboro Road. There's the easement mentioned with the curb cuts onto Murfreesboro Road, and then I believe there is an additional easement on the property as well. I'm not sure what for.
Okay. Well, just, I mean, I look at the utility easement is the green, because that's what it says in there, utility easement. It's listed on there as in green and in number 11. And the access easement is 14, that's in purple. As far as the 10, the orange, I'm not seeing what that's referring to. I just would like to know what that's about.
Item 10 is defined on page two of the plans under notes corresponding to Schedule B.
So just look again, I'm looking at sheet two of two. So you're saying sheet two, which other definition is that?
Sheet one of two, one page back.
Okay. You are correct. Effects are plotted hereon.
Very good, Mr. Coats?
Yes, that's good. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Holliday. Any other questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion to approve by Mayor Coles, second by Mr. Rutledge. Roll call. Mr. Coats?
No.
Aye.
Mayor Coles?
Aye.
Mr. Rutledge?
Aye.
And I will still vote no for the fact of the handicapped parking locatation, but the motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the planning commission.
Thank you, sir. Next item. Site plan, Dick Buchanan Trailer Storage. Trailer storage on 15.47 acres requested by SEC. Property located on Dick Buchanan Street. Tax map 14, parcel 50, I-2, industrial zoning district. Property owned by CSJ and Associates LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a request for site plan approval on Dick Buchanan Street. You can see there in the image, it's the parcel in blue that's outlined. Close, close-up view shows the area. This property, as you know, was zoned I-3 at one time, which is special use industrial, and that was for the McVantage Pallet Company. And after, it started back in 17, and by earlier mid-18, they, the company decided they would consolidate all their operations in Alabama and not move to this site, so they would not use it. So it was rezoned back to I-2 about 12 months ago, maybe 14 now. And so you can see the I-2 zoning here on this map is the dark navy blue color. So this is a proposal to conduct trailer storage on the site. And here's some photos of the area. So these first three slides are the plan that was submitted for September and up to the workshop two weeks ago. And then, as you go through those, you can see they've made some changes, including a note here that all surfaces will be dustless. That was not on the first plan. They've made other changes as well for engineering, so we'll get to those in a minute. Here's two slides with the entire site divided in two roughly so you can see each portion of the parking area that's proposed. Do have a total of 496 spaces. The grand total is 496 that's proposed. And this is their, maybe their third time here. They've been here multiple times. So we've had a good while to work through all their technical items. So there's not any technical items on the report, and I don't know if Mr. Leach has anything left or not. It doesn't appear so. So that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
Chairman, I'd have the applicant come up and ask a few questions if we could.
Please, sir. If someone here for this project would come to the podium, state your name and address for the record if you don't mind, sir.
Joe Dilemis, 782 Melrose Avenue in Nashville.
Just a couple of questions. So you've extended the concrete from the road well into your property to the gate. Is that one of the changes that we did, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And we are going to encourage traffic not to turn right out of the property and go towards Sand Hill Road. Is that correct, too?
Yes, sir.
What about some utilities? What's your thoughts on utilities in this area?
Currently, it's served by overhead electric from that aspect, and we would like to continue the overhead electric to serve the lights, which would be a change from the current plan.
Okay. So is that something you're going to work on and revise and do so? Is that what you're going to do, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is there going to be a revision to this plan down the road, as I understand, sir?
Yes, sir.
So although they've worked well with this, Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be good with the revisions they want to do to the utilities. I think for the board to do a deferral and let's get the, as they want to do it, and then come back to the workshop and take another look at it.
I would definitely like to discuss that. If there's going to be a request for deferral, it must be put in a form of a motion. And Mayor, if you have a comment before we do that?
I've got a question before we move to any motions. We've discussed at workshop and last month about getting traffic estimates as far as minimum and maximums. At workshop, it was said it would, this would be brought forth at this meeting. So do we have those numbers at this point, or where are we on that?
Yes, sir, we do. And I may be mistaken, but I thought it may have made it on the cover sheet to those plans, but-
Get it in front of you, Mr. Holliday.
The numbers that we have are fewer than 15 trucks a day.
So it'll mainly be products sitting on property and then swapped out?
Well, so what, actually, in the, in the scenario that we have gotten the most interest in for the, for the project, it's been in trailer leasing. So the trailers would be empty.
Okay. Basically, a holding lot for rental trucks.
They hold it if they need to, but ideally for them, the lot is empty. But that's, you know, it always tends to be the case.
The plans I see do not say anything about your traffic. So you're saying that you're expecting 15 trucks a day?
Fewer than 15 a day, yes, sir.
Fewer than 15 a day?
Mr. Rutledge, I did just find it. It's under Parking Data on the far end of the cover sheet to the right.
Oh, okay, I see it now.
We had also discussed in the workshop about facilities. I guess that's what y'all were just talking about, for these people to use instead of just doing their business anywhere they want to do it. Is that why we're entertaining the-
Entertaining deferral was due to the overhead.
Yes, so the utilities, as presented on here, the applicant is going to revise and change. And so therefore, what we would approve or disapprove is, we're not looking at the actual final document, if that makes sense. And the applicant appears to be willing to take the deferral and come back to the workshop to discuss it some more.
Absolutely. And facilities, I think, should still be discussed a little bit in some way, shape, or form, just due to the number of trucks and drivers coming in and out.
I also would like to see utilities, especially lighting on ground, not above head.
We'll discuss that at workshop, should it go that direction. Any other questions or comments before we entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer.
We have a motion to defer by Mayor Coles. Do we have a second?
Correct, second, yeah.
We have a second by Alderman Coats. Roll call, Mr. Coats?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Aye.
Holliday?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye, as well, by myself. We'll see at workshop, sir. Thank you.
Next item. Item number seven, recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, rezoning of property requested by SEC, Inc., 15.5 acres. Property located on Blair Road, tax map 29, parcel 21.01. Current zoning district R4, Mobile Home Park. Proposed zoning district R3, high-density residential zoning district. Property owned by 303B Partners. Mr. Logan.
This is a request to rezone property at 3:30, Blair Road, from R4, Mobile Home District to, Mobile Home Park District to R3, which is high-density residential. And this is 15 and a half acre tract, and it does sit right beside the Panatoni site that's under development on Blair, and also across from Portico Place, which is also under construction, although going somewhat slow. But Portico and Panatoni are under construction, and there are associated road improvements that are coming about with those projects, improvements to Blair as well. So this is a closer-in view. You can see the existing Mobile Home Park that comes off of Blair, and then the site we're talking about is just to the north of that Mobile Home Park, and it's outlined in blue on the screen. The Panatoni development is immediately to the right and touches this site on the east side. So this is the current zoning map. Again, it's zoned R4, which allows Mobile Home Parks, and there's two parcels there. You can see in that darker turquoise color under the navy blue. Both of those parcels are zoned R4, so existing Mobile Home Park to the south, and then vacant R4 tract to the north. It does have R3 to the west, which touches both of these R4 sites. So R3 is a neighboring zoning as well as R1 to the south side of Blair, and then, of course, I-2 for Panatoni. And Portico is a PDR, which is, has an R2 base zoning district. Excuse me, R1. So this is a concept plan that's been submitted by the applicant. You've seen by now, they have a couple renditions. One would show the density that would be allowed for mobile homes, and then the other concept plan, which is, this one shows a layout for townhomes. So let me move back just a second. So this is the larger view of the mobile home concept with the large detention area at the curve of Blair, and then the entrance road would be beside the detention pond. Then, this is the concept plan for townhomes, and the detention area roughly in the same position, and the road moves a little to the south. And you can also see the way Portico Place is supposed to develop off to the south and east across the street. So it is a 15 and a half acre tract, and I did go back and check the densities for both the mobile home concept and then the townhome concept, and both of those plans were accurate given our current zoning ordinance. So if you have a, there was a little discussion among some of the members last week. If you have a proposed mobile home park, you have to have 7,000 square feet allowed per lot inside the mobile home park if there's no public sewer and no public water available. But if there is public sewer and public water available, that is cutting half the 3,500 square feet per lot for mobile homes. So running those numbers, that, that's an accurate, it's an accurate drawing that they provided for what could be mobile homes. And I know some people had expressed that they may not be able to get that many, but based on that 3,500 in a urban area with sewer and public water, they could get the number they're showing. For now, since there's no concept plan per se, this would just be for the rezoning. So there's no technical items related to that plan. So that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Any questions or comments on this item for the board? Would you, is there a developer here this evening? Do you mind coming to this podium, sir? State your name and address for the record, if you'd be so kind.
Matt Taylor from SEC 850, Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. I've also got my clients with me as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rutledge, you have a question?
Taylor?
Yes, sir.
So my question, you know, so, and I apologize, I wasn't here for the workshop. I'm sure this is probably some workshop questions-
Sure.
Covid got me down. So, you know, I'm always going to ask the question, why can't, why aren't we not considering R1?
We feel like this is a need in the market and feel like it's an improvement over what could potentially be developed there today. So this is just where our client wants to go.
I understand. And if we, if this does not get approved, the mobile home park is the route that we're going to head here. Is that correct?
That's my understanding from my client. He's, I think he's closed on the property. So, I mean, that's not his first choice. He'd prefer to do something with some ownership and a little nicer product out there, so.
I understand. This is a question maybe for staff or somebody that's more knowledgeable than I am. If we change this to an R3, they have the opportunity, even though they've submitted this nice paperwork, because it's not a bad plan. I mean, I'm not completely opposed against it. But if it's R3, they don't have to go with what they're presenting here. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Short answer. So, I mean, how do I not know that you don't change this up to make it look something god-awful ugly?
So, I mean, we've got to come before, back before you. I mean, I think our intention is to try to do that fairly quickly. So I think it's going to be the, minus maybe one, one person, it's going to be the same people. I've got to come up there and look in the eye. So, you know, my client has not expressed any desire to do a switch and bait here. So he asked us to develop a realistic plan on both options, and I think that's what we've given you. So I'm not going to say there's not going to be something that moves five feet or something there, but a wholesale change, I don't foresee that unless requested by the board.
Would a PDR not be a better fit for this, maybe?
Hmm.
Just asking. I don't know. I'm just asking a question.
That, who wants to, Mr.? I'll say that a PDR would certainly have certain advantages, allowing for the board to have influence on the architecture, the design, the number of units, you know, things of that nature. By going to R3, I'm noticing that the one entrance plan, and I may be counting wrong, I'm a little, you know, just squinting here, but the one entrance plan has 142 units, the two entrance plan has 153 units. None of that necessarily is bound by this decision because this is just a, you know, a look at it, you know, for the, for the question at hand, not, not the actual layout of the property. But, but yeah, going to R3 does allow for maximum density allowed in R3.
So I love the fact that you have in this packet that you're going to use brick or hardy board, and the only spot you're going to use vinyl is on the, on the eaves-
Yes, sir.
-that you're not really going to see anyways. So I like that, but you can't guarantee me that you're going to stick with that. So next thing I know, I say yes to that, and then I have all vinyl fondos going up. You know what I mean? So, I mean, and I'm not saying that's what the intention is here. I'm just saying that that gives you the option to do that with the prices of what has been explained to me from yourself and other builders of construction materials.
Construction materials have gone up, but, you know, I think, all I can do is give you what my client's intention is, and, you know, I don't know that my client has used vinyl on anything in the past 10 years, so any substantial amounts.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Taylor, I really do.
Goodness, Rutledge?
No more comments.
Mayor?
Can we have the property owner come up for just a minute?
You can state your name and address for the record, Coach.
Yes, Laws, Bolden, 358 Dejarnet Lane, Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Mr. Bolden, thank you for entertaining me here on this, but I figure let's just cut right to the chase and directly ask you, you know, if this got approved both through a recommendation here and then approved by the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, is that the plan you would go with, or would you go with something different?
We've actually got a revised plan, a slightly revised- Uh, we've actually got a, a revised plan, a slightly revised plan that has two entrances that, that came out of the workshop we attended the other day. We implemented those changes and we would stick to the plan. Uh, you know, I think we went for the straight zoning simply because it's, uh, uh, more efficient time-wise and so forth and because it was, at least we felt like, uh, uh, clearly better than the alternative, which is allowed by right in, in the mobile home zone. So, uh, we will stick to what we tell you we'll do.
Well, you, you beat me to my other question, which was, I was going to ask you why not a PDR instead of straight zoning. Um, and then Mr. Leach or Mr. Logan, either one of y'all can confirm this, but just looking at the last zoning map, I can see this has got, um, R3 in the properties behind it, is that correct?
It's correct.
The side and behind.
Okay.
Well, it's immediately adjacent, this is the, the north and east, there's I-2 Industrial, then to the west it'll be R3.
Okay.
Other questions?
I'm good.
Any other questions or comments on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple.
Is this planned to be a gated community by chance?
Uh, no, sir.
Alderman Coats.
Mr. Bolden, just a couple of questions. Presently in R4, there's no sewer to this property, is that correct?
That's correct.
So therefore, Mr. Logan, with no sewer, the amount of, 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 uh, mobile homes could be at greater capacity, is that correct?
Well, I'm looking, I think Adam and I are looking at this as if it's, and this is more of a legal question, if it's in the city limits, it's going to have sewer.
It's.
Whether it's Saturday or not. That, I think that's the intent of the zoning ordinance, but I would defer to legal on that.
Let me just drive on, man, obviously. So you could put mobile homes on there at the present time, the present zoning.
Absolutely. We could, uh, pull the sewer a few hundred feet and put 118 or more mobile homes on there.
Okay. And so with your present summary, again, we're talking about zoning, but you have 141 townhome units.
Correct.
And you'll be putting sewer into each, every one of those, I presume?
Every one of them, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So therefore moving from, uh, R4 to, from mobile homes into R3, although some of the board members would say, you know, PD, PDR, the R3 would be lesser zoning as far as the amount of homes that could go in there and, and more importantly, the value of those homes would be greater as well.
Much greater, much, much greater.
You say you have a, um, each unit, a minimum of 1,200 square feet. Just concept wise, how much of that, uh, of the 141 would be at 1,200? Will there be bigger units as well put in or do they all be 1,200 square feet?
Uh, the, the, the surface parking units along the, uh, existing mobile home park side and along the, uh, excuse me, the industrial side, uh, there will be a few 1,200 square foot units on those two sides, if, just the surface parking units. Um, so I, I don't have it in front of me what that breakdown is, but it would be, uh, only possible in those two surface parking areas.
So then the, would it be fair to say the majority of the other homes would be larger than 1,200?
Much larger, yes, sir. They're all garage units.
I understand the concern of some of the, the people on the board. For me, getting out of R4 is, is, is a good step. That, that's my, my personal opinion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Coats. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Holliday?
Could I get a moment for some math? I just want to finish some math here before we go to a vote or anything, if I may, please.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thanks.
So.
I'm just trying to verify that 141 because, like I say, I tried to count and maybe I, I didn't do that right.
And while Mr. Holliday is doing that, I guess the question for staff is, since the PDR question has been brought up, would PDR not allow for a little bit denser project, should they choose?
Well.
You want me to do it, though?
It's fine, yeah.
PDR doesn't change your density, it changes how your density looks. So essentially, if they were to request a PDR with a R3 zoning, they're still allowed by right the density found in R3 zoning. However, how they basically configure that is different. The minimum lot sizes go away, all those types of things basically kind of go out the door. And just like with, uh, you know, Arbor Ridge, they can better configure the landscape to meet their property or, actually, that's a pretty good definition, really. So with something like this, with R3, you, you don't really need a PDR from their side, not saying from the city side, to make their concept work. They, they're, the way they're going to lay everything out doesn't necessitate them to basically cluster something and make it more dense in one area and less dense in another to average out throughout, throughout the site. They're going to have kind of a blanket density. So just from the developer's side, the PDR is not really advantageous. From the city's side, you know, there's, there's nice things to come with it, you know, having architectural standards and minimum footprints and all, all the other things that come with the PDR, but, you know, if they don't request it, it's kind of where we're at.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Holliday?
I'll do the math.
You're, you're happy, sir?
Yep.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? With that, we will entertain a motion to make a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
I'll make a motion to approve, or for a favorable recommendation.
I have a motion for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman by Mr. Rutledge. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Coats. We're going to do a roll call, starting with Mr. Coats.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Holliday and Mr. Rutledge?
Aye.
And aye as well, who will be sending a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, sir. Next item, item number eight. Site plan, Matchett Laverne Fast Truck Service, new building of 5,750 square feet on 4.98 acres, requested by Green Lid Design, property located at 393 Mason Road, tax map 17, parcel 12.01, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Manish Angoli. Mr. Logan?
This is a site plan request for, uh, a commercial business fast truck service at 393 Mason Road. And, uh, you can see here on the image, it's, uh, right in the middle of one of our I-2 districts in the city. Has a, a lot of big neighbors that are very large buildings. Um, this, uh, proposal, uh, is for a building of 5,750 square feet and, uh, is proposed to be a one-story building and, uh, in the I-2 district. And currently this property's vacant, uh, you can see there in the imagery, the close-up view there. Zoning map there again shows the dark blue, it's I-2. And, uh, this is the, uh, site plan that was submitted, uh, for the workshop. And then I put the latest site plan on there behind it. So you can see, uh, a few things here, these truck, looks like a truck turning or truck movement radius was added after the workshop. And there's a closer view of that. And then they've also called out their ADA parking since the workshop two weeks ago. Uh, one of the biggest differences, uh, you'll notice, the older site plan, there was no sidewalk at the workshop and tonight they have added the workshop, excuse me, tonight they've added the sidewalk in. So that's on the newest site plan in your packets. Some of the, uh, other comments, um, that are included, um, is that they need, uh, to submit a landscape plan and, uh, they have done that and so, uh, some of those can come off and some of the, uh, ADA sensible notes for parking can come off as well. And then, um, there's some comments by Mr. Leach and we'll get to those in a second. Uh, this is not an overlay, so there's no architectural overlay, uh, requirements and there's no materials board. Uh, here's some photos of the property. Again, it's, uh, vacant, but it is, uh, treed, so there's, uh, some vegetation there. And then just, uh, Mason Road has no shoulder or sidewalk currently. And that completes the report and I'll turn over to Mr. Leach for his comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Mr. Leach, if you would, sir?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I had requested a trench drain that was not included in the plan. Uh, I'd also requested a private hydrant just due to the, uh, basically elevation difference between the site and where the hydrant is. So if you're, that's actually a pretty good picture, going up the hill is where the hydrant is. The site is going to be higher than that typically, not a firefighter, but they tend to go by the path of the roadway and driveway. So by the time they run it down, down that road, turn the corner, go up the winding driveway, they'll probably be out of hose. It was, I think, 350-plus feet or something like that, maybe not out of hose, but they're not going to be happy about it one way or the other. Uh, curb ramp at the intersection, uh, currently it shows the, uh, two sidewalks, just basically dead ending there, no overlap. And the drawing indicates that there are two meters and two RBPs, uh, reduced pressure backflow preventers, uh, only one is needed since there's, it's a Badger High Low Meter. Of course, uh, also last time I requested a turning template, I guess I should have been a little more specific. Typically the turning template is put on the site so you can see where it's turning. I think it was put off the sheet. But other than that, uh, yeah, you can see it there typically, it's kind of around the building so you can see where those swept paths go. But that said, um, that's all I got.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leach. Is there a representative here this evening? If you would, state your name and address for the record.
Drew Ferguson, Green Lid Design, 114 West Main Street, Gallatin, Tennessee, 37066.
Thank you, sir. So some of these items have been taken care of, there's still some remaining items.
Correct. Uh, I got, with the turning template, I guess that was my misunderstanding, uh, with us being up in Gallatin, Henderson requires it and it's just, you know, show the fire height, or fire truck template on there and they kind of do the work for you. Uh, so we'll get that revised and then we'll get the fire hydrant fixed and, um, get all the other comments addressed.
Very good. Would you like for us to defer this item?
Yeah, well, I'll come back next week or in two weeks and we can hash it out again.
Very good. So with that, if there's any other questions or comments for this gentleman before we go any further, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to defer.
A motion to defer by Mayor Cole, second by Mr., was that Mr. Holliday? Oh, Mr. Rutledge, my apologies, sir. Second by Mr. Rutledge. Uh, Mr. Coats?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Aye.
Rutledge? And aye as well. We'll see you at workshops, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next item, workshop's the 16th of November, Tuesday. Item number nine. Final plat Corruthers Crossing Phase Two, 132 lots on 23.7 acres, requested by SEC, property located on Oasis Drive, tax map 29, PO parcel 29. PDR planned density residential zoning district, property owned by, sir? Property owned by Burkett Hills Investment Group LLC. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. This is a request for a final plat approval at Corruthers Crossing Phase Two. They are proposing 132 lots with this phase. And, um, they do, um, as you know, this development touches Davidson County, so you can see in the, uh, map there, the layout of the lots that have been platted so far and the, uh, blue outline is the area in, uh, discussion tonight. So, um, little closer view. So this is, um, moving toward the rear of the, the total development and, um, and this is all built out, it's supposed to be, I think it's, uh, 390 or 392 homes total, all single family. And there's a zoning map, so you can see, uh, a lot of R1 in the vicinity and, uh, some R2 at the ridge, which is to the south of this development. And then the, again, the blue outline is the property that we're talking about. And this is the plat. Um, so a little bit closer look there. Shows a lot arrangement, uh, the main road through this portion is supposed to be called And these are photos of the area. Uh, this is actually taken from the ridge and then this is some of the homes that are going up in the, uh, portion that this lies closest to, uh, Corruthers Road. And, um, anyway, uh, there were no technical items, uh, at the workshop and, um, so this plat is mainly unchanged since the workshop and, uh, there's no, uh, engineering comments or planning comments. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Logan. Any questions or comments from the board?
Chairman, is, is the applicant here tonight?
Yes, he is. Sir, if you would, please step to the podium.
Matt Taylor from SEC 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Taylor, just a question, on the Davidson County side, does, does that butt up to the houses that are already been built on Davidson County side?
I don't, I don't believe so. I think it's, uh, vacant land through there.
Just at the, the satellite point, there's a, there's a road on the houses that were built on Davidson County, I think it's called Horseshoe. I just didn't have that lined up with the satellite point, but if it's vacant land, it's okay. I just didn't know if it was adjacent to that, that subdivision that's already been put in.
I think we're one off right there. Yeah, that right there, it looked like there's one parcel in between us.
I believe the mayor has a comment, Mr. Coats.
Alderman Coats, I've actually just recently drove through there and I'm familiar with the other portion on the other side of Davidson County. There is a, a large gap between the two.
Okay, good.
It will eventually be built out, but I don't know when.
I just don't have the same issue of having different street names, which has been an issue for us and so, anyway, just a comment, thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? That will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve by Mayor Cole, second by Alderman Coats. All in favor, say aye, starting with Alderman Coats.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Holliday, Mr. Rutledge?
Aye.
And I myself. Motion passes. And our final item is bonds and letters of credit update. Mr. Leach?
Uh, no change from last month. Portico Place, I suppose, will be able to have their plat signed this month. They finally got everything straight with Smyrna, so maybe, we'll see, but, uh, that's it.
Very good. Any questions or comments for the, for staff? I'd like to thank everyone, meeting adjourned.